Under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas way. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one individual.
Next, we have our public comments. And we have, remember that you can only do three minutes and you'll get a little buzz. And we have Stephanie, um, Frenchotti. Sorry, I've been re-lying.
Hi, Stephanie Frenchotti. Um, I've talked to some of y'all today about the water main breaking on MLK in Brenham. It's a pretty serious situation. I think like at least five houses have been pretty affected by the water coming in. Uh, through, all through my yard, all through our neighbors' yards. We have elderly people and immunocompromised people. Actually brought some of the water here just so that if you feel inclined, you could smell it. It is pretty smelly and I'm, what I'm looking for is, what I'm hopefully looking for from y'all is some help to hopefully, uh, get it tested. I know that the water has been shut down, but it was pouring pretty heavily from like 10 o'clock till when I left here, so all day. Um, and yeah, I don't think the water is safe for people to drink. I know that they were telling me that they couldn't shut it down because wherever the water main broke, it was going to go out to the whole city. And so if they had to shut it down, they would have to shut down the water for the city. And then they would have to test it. But, um, you know, I brought the water here so you could smell it. I don't think anybody should be drinking this water. Um, and that's all I came here to say. Hopefully you give it a whiff and you agree and we give it a good test before the people of our city, uh, drink the water. And maybe there could be some communication gone out to people just to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only one that I had. So we have a presentation?
We have the Main Street Board annual report.
Hello, everybody. I'm Christina. I am here to introduce my Main Street Board President, Krista Marks. And I just wanted to give a couple of comments on our board this year. Um, has really gone above and beyond. We have a whole new accreditation system, um, with Main Street National. And I think if our board did not put the effort in, we would have seen a very different outcome, but I will let Krista address all of those things.
I a hundred percent thought she was going to take all of my first slide comments. So she felt me, the look, here we go. So hi, I'm Krista. Um, I am here today proudly wearing my Main Street Board President hat. I'm proud to represent this group. A little bit about us, we are a preservation-based economic development program when we were with the Main Street Board. And y'all, I'm here to tell you, Elgin, Texas is kind of a big deal. There are 1,225 municipalities in Texas. That includes all cities, towns, and villages. Of those, there have historically been 85 to 90 Main Street cities. In 2024, there were 90 that applied for renewal and re-accreditation and 41 passed that. We're one of 41 of 1,225. So, good job, Elgin. Christina does a marvelous job of leading this charge. We are a group of volunteers. We are, um, all pretty firm in our convictions and in certainly in our dedication to Elgin. And sometimes that can lead to some really passionate conversations, but we're really excited about where that leads us. Because in addition to highlighting the historical perspective of Elgin and of downtown and the things that are here, we also are taking a look at, we can actually bump up to you. We, uh, have done some really impactful things in 2024. So in 2024, we have been able to celebrate a net of seven new businesses in downtown. We're looking at $2.88 million in public and private investment just in 2024. But y'all, look at this in volunteer hours. Over 725 and a half volunteer hours were recorded in 2024. And that's just the recorded hours. Um, when you put together a fancy mathy thing on this, that comes up to $24,000 worth of volunteer time that has all gone into this. And it's because of the volunteers and the work and the programming there that we're bringing fresh energy and vibrancy into our downtown. Uh, so that's why we work so hard to do the things that we do. And we have a signature event, y'all, and that is HOGI. As you know, um, we have several things to celebrate. Number one, it was HOGI. Uh, number two, the day was beautiful. There were wonderful things that were happening there. But we've got three other things that are specifically highlighted here. One is that we had the highest ever amount of sponsorship dollars that came in, sitting at a beautiful $61,000 in sponsorship that came in. We made our goal and passed our goal to have 111% of our goal of vendor spaces. And there were, we were a hot commodity. People wanted to be here, uh, so much so that when we were going down Main Street and we're blocking it all out, we actually kind of drew out some extras just in case people showed up. Uh, but it just, it worked out to be a beautiful day. We had a great job. Our volunteers who coordinated the vendors worked tirelessly and for a solid six months getting it all together of meeting weekly, um, to map things out and make sure that we had good representation. And here, huge chunk of those volunteer hours, over 500 volunteer hours happening just connected to the HOGI Festival itself. So, um, it's unprecedented that we've been able to have that met. And those volunteers range from the high school kids that are coming and they're helping and they're being runners and they're helping haul hay bales at the end. There were kids who have never touched a hay bale, who were hauling some hay bales. Um, so that's getting back to our historical roots there too. But it was a beautiful thing to see everybody across that. And just speaking as a long time Elginite, one of the things that I truly loved about this event was not only seeing the Elginites and the people that I know and that we've known forever, literally for our whole lives here, but there were so many people I've never seen before in my whole entire life. And they were in downtown Elgin and they were a part of our community and they were a part of the excitement and they were able to see what we have and who we are here in Elgin, Texas. So, big thanks to everyone, to you for your support, to the community for their support, and certainly to the volunteers and to Christina for everything that she's done to get us there. But wait, there's more. In addition to HOGI, we also have over 30 other events that, um, we, that we work very diligently and are dedicated to working toward. That of course is, includes our Sip Shop and Stroll. There are so many things that happen with that, um, happening the second Thursday of every month. Music in the Park is a partnership with, um, with the Parks Group and it's happening every April and May. You know, we kind of accidentally grew it into two months and that stuck and that's a beautiful thing. And seeing how well that was received, that has become a priority for our funding. The Explore Elgin's Arts and Culture continues to evolve. That's happening in May. Of course, the HOGI Festival. And then I know you saw all the things that have been happening downtown with the holidays. There was literally something every single weekend. Um, and that takes a lot of work, but it also brings a lot of dollars to our businesses downtown and a lot of traffic. In addition to the things that we are in charge of, we also partner with lots of different initiatives, including this whole big list that you see here. We have things that are happening weekly, like the farmer's market. There are things that happen about, what is it, every three years? We have the MLK March here. Is it every three years? Yeah, every three years, we have the MLK Walk that happens here. Um, we have an annual attitude. We partner with, um, with the city and with the Main Street Board and with so many other people for Relay for Life. The Elgin Music Festival, um, which, go ahead, I'm going to sneak this out. Um, the second annual Elgin Music Festival is on the calendar for the weekend of April 12th. You heard it here first. Uh, Juneteenth, Juneteenth, on the Juneteenth National Night Out, Pearls Before Swine Art Show in conjunction with the HOGI Festival, Dia de los Muertos Festival, which is a young festival to our town that continues to grow and to bring so many people downtown. And if you did not get a chance to attend that in Veterans Memorial Park expansion, oh my gosh, I hope you're there next year. It was incredible. That stage was literally on fire in all the best ways. Um, the Veterans Appreciation Parade, and we have our kids downtown too with the holiday concert. And those are things that we participate in, but we're not in charge of it and we're totally fine with having that particular role because the beautiful things happen because of these partnerships and the partners that you see here. Um, we, it's one of the beautiful things about our community is that we do have the relationships that are built that enable us to have a greater impact than we could if we were working in isolation. And you see, that's everything from the ISD to Downtown Elgin, Inc., which is the, um, financial partner to Elgin Main Street Board, working closely with Parks and Rec, working plus closely with the Public Library, with the Farmer's Market, Elgin Arts Association, and even things outside of our city limits, like the Bastrop County Grape and Texas Brazos Trail. Whole lot of words and a little bit of time. Thank you very much for your time and for your support and for all that you do and allow us to do for our beloved town of Elgin, Texas.
Thank you.
Good evening. You know, it's very hard to follow that act, especially when you're talking about things criminal court-wise. But we just want to let council know that we're statutorily mandated now to offer what we call the Youth Diversion Program. Essentially, it helps folks from creating a lengthy youth criminal record and it attempts to divert them, right? It's in the name. We work with Mark, the prosecutor. He's well-versed in this. And then, um, hopefully a juvenile case manager at some point will need to be hired and work with them in conjunction to prevent youth and, and essentially hope to reroute some of the behaviors that, um, might be coming down the pipeline and prevent them from further interactions with our law, local law enforcement. Um, Yadi, do you have anything else to add? She's our court administrator. Essentially, she's acting as our juvenile case manager, but we just wanted to let you guys know that this is something we're doing now. It's come down the pipe. And if you hear of cases going down, criminal cases going down with our local juveniles, it's a good thing and we're going to reroute them to do good things in the community, like give back through community service and programs at their school, get tutoring, et cetera, et cetera. So I want to let you guys know that this is out there. Um, if you hear anything about it and answer any questions hopefully you may have. Not as fun as HOGI. I don't dispute that.
So when did the program start?
January 1.
January 1?
Yes. January 1.
So I want to ask you how many have gone through yet?
Not yet, y'all, and that's still to be determined. And of course, we have to, um, let the juveniles that qualify know that this program is out there. It's something that their parents have to be on board with. So it's really a collaborative effort between the prosecutor, the parent, we'll get some school involvement too when needed. So, um, it's, it's much more community approach than say, receiving a citation, here's your fine, because essentially what that does is punish the parents usually, so.
How many youth do you expect? I'm seeing that ages range from 10 to 17.
You know, it's gonna, it's hard to say because our community is growing by leaps and bounds. And you know, a lot of it depends on what happens in our school system, right? So if there's assaults at school, obviously, you know, those end up in front. So we don't, we don't really know. And this is kind of a learning process for us too. And of course, the parents have to be on board too. So that's, that's another question mark we have.
It's not just for students in the school though, right?
Right, it's for all youth 10 to 17 that qualify.
Well, how about no youth qualified? Cause no youth get in trouble.
Well, you get in trouble and you haven't been a part of a program in any other jurisdiction and basically you don't have any other criminal history. Okay.
One, one quick question.
Sure.
She's talking like you used, uh, what do you call it? Youth diversion coordinator.
Right, so court administrator is serving as our juvenile case manager, okay? At some point, we'll come to you beautiful people and ask for some assistance with hiring that person that we're statutorily mandated to hire. We're not under a timeline, deadline. We just, we want to see how, how many cases we have before we say, yes, we need this.
So we're expecting just one person?
At this time, at this time, yes, but we don't know. I can't imagine needing more than one juvenile case manager just yet for Elgin.
Cause the kids hear this, so they're gonna act right.
We sure hope so. We should have mentioned that in the prayer this.
I can go back.
Keep that in your closing.
I'm good.
All right. Well, again, if you need anything, municipal courts right next door, okay? All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Yes. So council, mayor, uh, city managers report, uh, the first item is the Center Point Energy Update, Part B of the rate schedule. This is basically official letter that they've sent into the city notifying us of the rates that have already gone into effect as of, um, this would have been November 27th, 2024. So just a standard, it had already been approved by the Texas Railroad Commission. Not any action needed by the city, just more of a, uh, information purposes to let you know, um, not going down as you would have imagined. Uh, next in Yell's packet is, uh, talking about setting the second monthly meetings for council, uh, direction to staff for that. What we've provided in your packet is kind of sticking to the standard of what we've had before, which is the third Tuesday of each month. Um, obviously this is subject to change, um, by direction if we need to move things around, but, uh, up there we kind of have what typical is and bouncing around. But just want to make sure the staff is so we can start preparing agendas and just having kind of a scheduled system going forward. Um, and if, if council sees any changes, you know, let me know, but this is kind of what we're going to assume, uh, for at least the near term future on that.
Can this be put online?
We, we could, and that's kind of what we're anticipating is if this is good to go ahead and start letting people know. Again, obviously if we come and council, councils are meeting, we decide not, that we don't have agenda for it, or if we decide to move it or call a special session, that'd be updated. But if you guys are good with this, I'll, I'll work with, uh, City Secretary, just to post it as, this is what we're anticipating.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Do we need an action on this? No. Just direction to city staff.
Go forth and do this.
It's down there.
I believe it's in that October timeframe why it's marked out there as conflict, not necessarily holiday. Um, next, uh, is the Library Advisory Board quarterly report. Not going to, not planning to go through that. Y'all have all been provided that in packet. If you've got any questions or concerns, uh, feel free to reach out to me directly and I'll get you those answers.
I just, I just want to appreciate or say, I appreciate that the, the library's extended hours. Somebody who uses it with a small child, it's really nice to go after work and also later on Saturday. So, thank you all.
Uh, similarly, the Historic Review Board quarterly report's been provided in Yell's packet for review. If you've got any, uh, specific questions or concerns or comments, uh, just let me know and I'll look for, look to address those for you. Um, there's something that's a little bit newer and actually went back a year is the Plan and Zoning, um, Commission. We did an annual summary. We tracked 2023 and 2024. There's a lot going on in Elgin and this is kind of, uh, an overall summary, um, that was provided in your packet. It's kind of a one pager, um, that kind of list of, you know, what accomplishments, what has actually gone through the Plan and Zoning Commission, uh, over the course of the year, um, between preliminary plots, final plots, um, any kind of zoning changes we've seen, specific use permits that have been issued. And so, uh, some of the highlights, just looking 2023, we had just under 1,100 total plots that were approved and that's being final plots, which essentially if a final plot has been approved, that means you could actually build a home on the lot of that plot. And then for 2024, just over a thousand. So a little bit of a downtick, but not what you would consider a severe downtick in the number of plots. So, uh, developers are still coming in and, and looking to subdivide property or we're seeing some subdivisions even as an example, number eight there, East Alamo Estates, where they took a one lot into four. So you're seeing some of those infill lots that we've had conversations about, even on the interior of Elgin that are continuing to develop. So again, really meant to be a one pager. Uh, if you've got specific questions on any of these developments, you know, please reach out to the city staff and we'll get you answers on the details of them. Uh, but overall, it's something I know you guys generally have questions or get asked questions. This is a, a good, uh, pocket stuffer that you can kind of pull out and say, this is where we are with this particular development, you know, from the course of the year. Uh, any questions on that? Uh, number six on the item is a discussion in possible direction to staff regarding the minor change in usage for the Circle Brewing Facility, uh, under a planned development district agreement with the city of Elgin. Uh, we were approached by, um, as everyone is aware, the, the ISD has purchased that, uh, particular facility. Uh, we were approached by the ISD and they had a use that they were proposing to the city because that particular land was under a very specific use, basically a brewery. Uh, we had spoken with the ISD after they purchased the property and said, council would like to know what you plan on using, utilizing the facility. Um, they are here to speak tonight, but I'll kind of take it through generally what they're looking for. And this isn't the end all be all, but for right now, for the ability to utilize the facility would be essentially there's existing office spaces there and they would use those as office spaces. So it would be the exact same use that was already approved with the Circle Brewing Facility. Um, but they would also like to use it for gathering for training, uh, of staff. Um, so they formally submitted a letter. Uh, we did meet with EDC, EDC Director and staff did approve that this use, uh, they felt that still kind of meant the merits, uh, of the facility and had no issues with it. Um, so not really anything for you guys to take action on per se, but really to bring it publicly so you guys understand what that use is being utilized for. Uh, the school district has come if you have some specific questions on it. Um, but just kind of wanted to keep council informed because that, that was a very large, prominent project at the time and there's been a lot of questions of what's it going to be used for. So for the temporary usage that they're talking about, for the foreseeable future, that's what it would be utilized for.
My question is, is it vacant now? Did the equipment, I'll go back to the.
My question is, is it vacant now? Did the equipment, I'll go back to the vendors or?
I will have to, Mike, if you want to, or Randy, if you want to speak to that exactly what's there or not.
Good evening.
Uh, everything was auctioned off several months ago. So currently, there's just a few, a little bit of furniture was left over. But everything was auctioned off.
Okay. So all the space is free and clear, so whatever.
Yes.
You need to expand into.
But, um, are you guys gonna be putting up signage? Like Elgin ISD, something, training facility or?
Probably not. Um, at this point, the, the, as we're growing, just like the city is, we're running out of places for training. So we're, we're trying to utilize that place immediately for training. Long term, probably over the next few months, and we'll be coming back to the city for this, is a master plan for that site that may be career in technology education. So we, we've got signs that say it's district property, um, but we don't know what it will be eventually. Right now, we want to use it because we need the space, but plus having people in there, it's kind of a picket building, kind of helps the neighborhood also.
Sorry, you said there are signs that say it's Elgin property?
Yes.
Okay.
At both entrances.
At both entrances. And, um, what is the status of the trail?
It was actually cleared. I actually walked it right before Christmas, so it's cleared. And we're gonna, at least, at the very least, for the time being, it's gonna be maintained. And our grounds, people are going through there consistently, keeping it.
I appreciate that because somebody, somebody had said that it was being maintained, and they were really surprised and, and were happy to learn that.
About a fifteen, twenty minute.
The training, you're gonna use the building for, it'll be staff related or kid related?
I'm, I'm sorry?
The, uh, training that you're talking about, using the.
It'll be for staff. Yes.
And then the city has already issued a temporary permit?
Uh, basically, this is just bringing it, um, to us. But yeah, essentially, it's notification of kind of a change in use, um, until they have a finalized plan as far as a PDD that would come back forth like Mike was saying, this is, we're looking to internally get it in there. And so we ran it through the process, but I wanted to just make sure everybody was aware of it. Yes, they are keeping up with the trail and a lot of the things that, you know, the city was receiving in return for the original PDD. All right. Thank you, Mike. Um, item number seven is, uh, again, with the ISD, uh, discussion and possible direction to city staff regarding, uh, memorandum of understanding between the city of Elgin and the Elgin Independent School District related to the Stone Creek Ranch Plan Development District dated, uh, March fifteen, twenty twenty two. Um, as council may or may not remember, um, there was a development out there called Stone Creek Ranch, which was gonna do a multifamily development across some properties on, uh, just immediately south of the Baptist, uh, church there. Um, at the time, we did a full PDD for that entire property to be developed. Um, sometime after that had been approved by council, the ISD and the developer reached an agreement that a portion would be sold to the ISD. And that was brought back before council, and we amended the PDD for that transaction of the property. Um, as part of that transaction of the property, the ISD owned that portion. Uh, it was written into the PDD that they would come back before council and specify exactly what that use of that property would be by the school district, uh, for council, uh, to ask questions and kind of get an idea. Um, at the time, it was, this was prior to the bond issuances being, uh, approved, uh, by the public. Uh, so we weren't able to actually write in a very specific project like we generally do. Um, so in this case, they do have a use that they are proposing. And I have a couple of slides here. Uh, school district's here to talk more on it if you have specific questions. Um, but they gave us a couple of renditions. This is going to be a transportation center. Um, and they've provided a couple of renditions, which all of you guys have seen in Yell's packet, uh, in advance. Um, high level goals, I'll kind of let, uh, the school district talk about it. But here's the tracking question. Is this little piece right here? Um, again, from a city staff standpoint, no, uh, polls with that. There, there's still, have to meet tech stop requirements, as that is, uh, tech stop right away out there. Uh, they have been in discussions with their engineers and the Triada projects with how that all is gonna come together. Uh, and city staff has also been talking to them throughout. Uh, so really, this is just kind of more of a notification to you guys of what they plan for that property and to answer any questions that you would be, um, and, and so that they feel confident in moving forward, uh, with it. There's not a change that is needed to the PDD. Specifically, it's more of a presentation to you guys to say, this is the use that they intend. Um, I can't tell you this was originally one of the uses that we had figured when that, uh, amended PDD was done back then. That was one of the anticipated uses that we felt with. Um, but at the time, without the funds being passed, we didn't know that the funds would be there for that specific project. I don't know if the school district wants to come up and just, if anything I missed from a high level there, Randy, that you want to fill in gaps?
Uh, good evening. Uh, thank you for, uh, for the time and saving. No, I think, uh, Mr. Perry really, um, addressed, uh, this for the most part. Uh, this facility is really just an addition, uh, to our existing transportation facility, which, uh, like many of the facilities in the district and in the city, uh, we're, we're outgrowing. Uh, so this facility would just serve as an expanded transportation facility. We're not looking to eliminate the one that we currently use. Um, it's just, uh, in, in need of a second one currently. Um, generally, um, right now, we've got a fleet of about seventy five buses. Uh, so as you can see in, uh, in one of the slides here, uh, phase one of this facility serves about, uh, thirty six buses. So we would just look to, uh, really split, uh, an east-west transportation, um, distribution for our bus fleet. Um, there would potentially be a second phase as part of our twenty twenty four bond. Uh, but the part we're looking at here would address phase one of this, uh, transportation center and, uh, give us a little bit more capacity, uh, to send our buses out, uh, one from the, from the east side of our, uh, existing, uh, lot. And this, uh, would, would help us on the west side, uh, to split that up. But, uh, I'd really be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
So as far as traffic impact?
It, it'll still go through normal, there with city limits, still goes through normal reviews. They've been in coordination with tech stock, because we have a lot of projects that are intersecting around that particular area in addition to County Line Road Phase Three. So all those con, all those conversations are still going through and would go through your normal review process. Um, and I can tell you that with city staff that, that has been currently happening. So there's not a bypass around it. Everybody's on the same page there.
Would we dump out the traffic for the buses or are they gonna come out?
It would be onto FM eleven hundred.
It would be eleven hundred.
But as far as alignment with, uh, you have the Briarwood in City Mud there. You also have Triada that would be adjacent to it with, if you all remember, Muni Parkway, which is a major arterial, very similar to County Line Road, that's going northwest. So those D cell and XL lanes and all of that, that's still going through. It's Texas domain, and it's still going through all of those to make sure everything aligns correctly with it. So, um, that would all be part of the detailed engineering as they submit. But we, those conversations have been ongoing.
So where is this in relation to the connector that's going through from, from two ninety to Land Road that each development's gonna be?
I knew you'd ask that question. I don't have a slide. So if you look at the slide that's shown on that property, that major Muni Parkway is probably, I would estimate about seven or eight hundred feet to the west of it.
Okay.
And that'll be running north-south direction. And you go, and if you've gone out there, you've seen dirt starting to move around out there with the Triada, um, vibing out there. So that's just to bring everybody's memory up. That'll be that major arterial. That's the one that is building the fifteen acre sports complex off of that for the city as well. So that's all right there in that general area.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Randy. And we are going, it's not listed on city manager report, but it, it just came up today. Um, just want to make council aware. So the federal government has basically shown to, to shut everything down on the ninth, uh, in uh, remembrance of the presidential Jimmy Carter's passing. Um, different, that's flowed down to different state levels, all the way down to city and county level. Um, I was just informing the mayor. I, I did talk to the commissioner for Bastrop County. They are remaining open on the ninth. Um, and just, you know, wanted to bring that to council. The intention's still to keep the city open for the ninth as well. Unless anybody has any objections. Okay. Very well.
Okay, we're gonna go on to our consent agenda. And there's like ten items on there. Um, if anybody has any question or want to, but I will say number three is where we have Cap Cod. Um, I want to appoint Council Member Swain to replace myself on there because of conflicts with some things I have to do. So he's retiring now. And graciously, Zanny would love to be a part of it. So that's where that's coming from.
And quite a few minutes, and probably the next council meeting will be very similar to it. Uh, we're doing a little bit of catch-up, um, for you guys' approval on that, uh, just with the transition, city secretary, and catch-up over the holidays. And so, um, I would expect maybe plus or minus about that same amount for the next council meeting to be in there. But at that point in time, we should be completely caught up, um, as normal, and you'll be approving them from council to council.
A little other conversation, I need to take a motion.
I have a second.
Okay, we'll begin with Mayor Proton, Roger.
Roger, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Lane, yes.
Love, yes.
Dennis, yes.
All right. We're gonna do a little moving around. Um, we're going to go into executive session now and then come back out. It is seven oh six, and we're going to executive session.
It is seven fifty-nine and we are reconvening from executive session back into our regular city council meeting.
So, item number one on new business, council is city appointments to the Elgin Chamber of Commerce Board. Two positions for that. I know from a city staff standpoint, Kaylee with the EDC has volunteered to be one of those board assignments. But we'll be looking for council to be okay with that and potentially select a second person. There's no requirement or definition that it be councilperson or city staff or anything like that. But we do want to make sure that whoever is appointed will be there at the meetings. So Kaylee with staff says yes, she's committed to being there going forward.
Most of their meetings are Thursday mornings, right?
First thing early. Early.
Seems like ignorance, but who are the current city?
Me. And Tom.
Okay.
That was Tom.
So, so I guess my question is. Well, got Kaylee, but then maybe I jumped again. Are you saying you again, or are we saying?
Well, I'm not stepping off, but we need to find someone to replace Tom.
Okay, okay. So it's just, it's just one.
It's just one person.
Okay, that's all right.
Sorry. Mayor would stay on for one. The recommendation from staff and talking would be Kaylee from EDC.
Got it.
To fill the role that Tom once had. So it'd be looking for a motion that you guys are okay with that.
I'll back up. Mayor, I'll back up. I already know which is all that. Okay, so do I have a motion for?
I'll make a motion to prove it.
Okay.
A second.
And we'll begin with council member Love.
Love, yes.
Dennis, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Wayne, yes.
All right, motion carries and it will be Kaylee. I'll say let us back up quick and do the, for executive session.
Yes. Do that. Do you want to go to number eight?
Yeah, let's just jump down.
New business, discuss and take possible action regarding the creation of the city charter committee or amendments to the city charter.
No, no.
Nope, nope.
Next one.
Yeah.
While it's not on here.
Oh, that's not here, man. Okay, so this one's not on here.
It's on here, it's not on my slide.
So we have a.
We have action coming out of the.
Out of the executive session, we kind of skipped that one that came out. Let's back up to that one. And we're entertain a motion for our interim manager, city manager.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Isaac Turner to serve as the interim city manager.
Okay, I'm gonna have a second.
Go Dennis.
All right, we'll begin with Mayor Pro Tim.
Rashid, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Wayne, yes.
Love, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Okay. Now we can go.
Now we can go to number eight.
Yes.
Number eight, kind of jumping around here, discuss and take possible action regarding creation of the city charter committee or amendments to city charter. Mark.
All right, council, mayor. So as you recall last meeting, you requested that we employ the services of Charlie Zek to act as kind of a guide you through the charter process, creating a charter committee, answer any questions you have regarding your charter. Looking at that as holistically. So Mr. Zek is here tonight. Mr. Zek is a municipal attorney who has many expertise in the municipal world, but one of those is charter, charter review, charter committees and things like that. He's led a number of cities as big as San Antonio and El Paso through this process along with other smaller cities your size. So I think he's a great asset to have walk you through that. So I'm gonna step aside and let Mr. Zek come up here and kind of give you a presentation and then answer questions for you about the process.
How's everybody doing?
Okay.
All right. I know y'all have a long meeting tonight and so I'll try to keep it short. And I'm probably not nearly as up as I usually am. I had a C six, C seven zectomy about four weeks ago. So I'm on recovery from that. So I'm still a little stiff, so. But I'm gonna go through some, just a brief presentation on the process of how you amend your charter. It's all statutory. And before that though, I'm gonna have a brief discussion. I don't know who's in charge of the slides.
It'd be me, just point to me and I'll swipe.
Can you go to the next slide? There you go. So I'm gonna talk first about a charter commission. Charter commission, charter committee, the words pretty much interchangeable with respect to charters. First of all, when it comes to the create to amending your charter, a charter committee is not a requirement. Just everybody know charter committee is not a requirement under the law. City council can, but pursuant to statute, on its own motion, place amendments to its charter on, on the ballot for the citizens to consider. Many cities do though utilize a charter committee, stakeholders from the community to go through the charter for purposes of, of review. I always recommend five to thirteen members. Anything greater than that, nine is really my preferred number. Anything greater than that and the committee gets fairly, it gets unwieldy. You end up having, quite honestly, believe it or not, more absences with a larger committee than you do with a, with a smaller committee. And it's easier to get dates together for people to meet with a smaller committee. So I find five to nine to, to work fairly well. Folks prefer an odd number, so five, seven, nine is usually what you're looking at. I oftentimes have questions about whether or not a council member should be on the charter commission. My opinion is they should not be. If the purpose is to put together a stakeholder committee, an independent stakeholder committee of citizens to look at your charter for purposes of review, that I believe the council should let those folks do their job and not have a council member on that committee. And remember when they bring the charter to you for your, for recommendations to place items on the ballot, it is not mandatory that you accept those recommendations. You can accept them or reject them. But I do not recommend that council members sit on charter committees reviews, if you're gonna have one. I also recommend that you give a charge, whether it be general or whether it be specific. And what do I mean by charge? You know, they're gonna need some direction on what it is exactly you want for them to look at when you're, when they're looking at the charter. And what I tell my charter committees when I'm assisting them through the process is if it isn't broke, there's no reason to fix it. And so really what they should be looking for as they're reviewing the charter, excluding, excluding legal issues, are issues that they think would work better for their community, right? For the, in this case, the city of Elgin. And a charge from you, if there's, I always recommend that this, this body say, hey, we would like you to look at term limits. Or we would like you to look at council size. We would like you to look at terms in general. You know, is there something specific that you want them to look at, or do you want them to do just a general review? Or is it both? Is it a general review from their perspective of things that might work better for their community? Because remember the charter is the, is the constitution of the city, so to speak. And are, and/or are there specific things that this body, having working within the constructs of the charter as in their role as council members and mayor, is there something specific that you would like them to look at? And so I, I suggest that you give those charges to them if, if indeed it is something you want them to look at. And then deadline. If you are looking to have an election on the charter in November, you've got plenty of time. You don't have any time to do it for May. Not with a committee. It's just not possible. Deadline to order an election for May is February, city secretary, fifteenth. I thought it was fourteenth, fifteenth, it's usually mid-month somewhere around in there. So no time at all. I also recommend that, that you allow me to do a legal review of the charter just to make sure it's still in compliance with state law. I'm not sure when your charter was last reviewed or amended. Maybe it hasn't been. I don't know. I didn't take a very close look at it.
Nineteen ninety-six.
Nineteen ninety-six, okay.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, okay. So quite a while ago, the laws have changed in the legislature quite a few times since nineteen eighty-six. So there, there may be a chance that there's something in there that conflicts with state law and we'll wanna, we'll wanna clean those, we'll wanna clean those things up. So that, so November, plenty of time. You can go through a full review of your charter, meet once or twice a month with a, with a committee or commission, have a presentation made to council, have some public hearings. Plenty of time for a November election, if you start now. Okay, next slide. Oh, there it is. All right. So. Let me just briefly give you a high level view, right, of local government, just real quick, all right? There's essentially four kinds of, four kinds of cities in Texas, right? There's special law cities. Special law cities were cities that were created by the Texas legislature, by special law, all right? There's still a few of those around, believe it or not. General law type A cities, general law type B cities, and general law type C cities. Those are known as general law cities. Why are they known as general law cities? They're known as general law cities because those cities must look to the general laws of the state to get their authority to do anything, okay? And then there's home rule cities. Home rule cities were implemented under the Texas constitution in nineteen twelve. An election by the citizens of Texas to have the authority to self-govern themselves. And that's what a home rule charter does. It sets out all, all things, how does your government look and operate? So for example, type A general law city has five council members, one mayor. Mayor only votes in the case of a tie, has no administrative day-to-day duties. That's a good overview, right? That's the general law type A. A home rule city, they get to choose how many council members they have. Obviously, they'll have nine, right? So it is those types of things that, that go, that go into the charter. So in nineteen twelve, we had a constitutional amendment and then the Texas legislature put into effect, I don't remember the name of the statute, but it's now been codified, the number of the statute, but it's now been codified in the Texas Local Government Code. Does everybody know how to find the Texas Local Government Code online? Yes? Okay, good. So you can go to chapter nine. And everything with respect to home rule cities and how they're created and amended can be found in chapter nine of the Texas Local Government Code. Nine dot oh four deals with charter amendments. Nine dot oh five deals with adoption of charter or amendment. Nine dot oh seven deals with certification of charter or amendments. And nine dot oh eight deals with the registration of charter or amendments. Feel free to stop me at any point and ask me any questions. Next slide. So nine dot oh four, as I said earlier, city council may, on its own motion, without having a committee, place an item on the ballot for its citizens to consider for purposes of amending its charter, all right? The other time you have to put it on the ballot is when you get a petition from at least five percent of the number of qualified voters of the municipality. In your case, that would be five percent, or twenty thousand, whichever is smaller. I assisted the city of San Antonio with their charter amendments recently and it, part of it was by petition, twenty thousand. They had to have at least twenty thousand signatures. So if you have a charter committee, charter committee reviews the charter, comes to you with recommendations, and then you can, or not, depending on how you feel, place those on the ballot for consideration. Next slide. There's specifics with respect to how you order the election. I typically, I'm the city, my firm represents probably forty-five or fifty cities, a city attorney in the state of Texas. I usually do ordering of election by resolution. In this case, ordering of election has to be done by ordinance. Do you guys have one or two readings for an ordinance? Two. So we have to keep that in mind when we're thinking about, okay, we have to adopt an ordinance ordering this election. It has to be done by ordinance pursuant to statute. So the ordinance ordering the election shall provide for the election to be held on the first authorized uniform election date prescribed by the election code. In this case, it would be November, if you're looking for November. Or on the earlier of the date of the next municipal general election or municipal general election. Now, we only have two, so a lot of that language is fairly antiquated. And the election date must allow sufficient time to comply with other requirements of law and must occur on or after the 30th day after the date the ordinance is adopted. So, that's usually not a problem because we have a deadline of ordering elections. It's well before that 30th date. Next slide. You have to publish notice in the newspaper of a charter amendment. That notice must include a substantial copy of the amendment, of the proposed amendment. It must include an estimate of the anticipated fiscal impact to the city if it's approved, and it must be published on the same day in each of two consecutive weeks, with the first publication occurring before the 14th day. So, we have to make sure that the fiscal impact, sometimes it's zero, but analysis does need to be done on each proposed amendment to determine what that fiscal impact would be. That often, more often than not, that happens on common everyday, what I consider to be common everyday charter amendments, council, council pay, right? What's the fiscal impact of that? Next.
Who does the fiscal impact analysis?
Yeah, so it's gonna depend. It's gonna depend on what the amendment is. If it's a, if it's just a, we plan to raise council pay by $25 a, you know, a meeting, then, you know, anybody, your finance director could do that fiscal impact. It's pretty straightforward. But if it's a more complicated charter amendment, say, I, I assisted the city of El Paso on a petition for a climate, a climate policy, and that was a substantial financial impact on the city, and they had all sorts of different qualified experts assist with that. So, it's just gonna depend on, on what the amendment is. Was that helpful? Okay. The amendment cannot contain any more than one subject, so you can't have all the amendments, it's just, you can't have all the amendments in one vote. Each has to be divided up into different subject matters, and it has to be prepared so that they can, the voter can approve or disapprove any one amendment without having to approve or disapprove all the amendments. Next slide. So, let's assume that you have an amendment, you, you have an election to amend your charter, and that, that they all get approved at the, at the election. So, you canvass the election, right? Now, the election is official. The charter amendments are still not adopted yet, right? They don't go into effect until after you enter an order, you enter an order in the record of the municipality declaring the amendment to be adopted. So, you have an election, you canvass the votes, so long as, as a, as a majority of the qualified voters approve it, then, then they are adopted. But it doesn't take effect until you enter that order into your record. So, it's a two-step process. I usually do that order by resolution. 9.07, and then as soon as practical, after you adopt a charter amendment, the mayor or the chief executive officer of the, of the city shall certify to the secretary of state an authenticated copy of the amendment under the municipality's seal showing the approval of the voters, and then the secretary of state is required to file and record the certification. So, that's a, that's the statutory, you can go to the next slide. That's the statutory requirement. Oh, yeah, then the city secretary has to record it in the city records, of course. Now, next slide. So, that's the really high level, that's the statutory required process. Now, the devil's always in the details, right, with respect to the actual review of the charter. And so, it's important that if you're gonna have a charter committee or commission put together, that you get the right stakeholders in place, they, and let them, give them that appropriate charge, if it's rather, whether it's a general charge of review or with specific charges, or if it's just a specific charge. I've assisted cities where they said, committee, we only want you looking at these five things. That's it. That's all we're interested in having looked at in our charter. But it's up to you, as a governing body, to determine, you know, what you want that charge to look at. But I highly recommend it. And then those folks get together and they go through the charter, and in this case, when I'm assisting, it's with my assistants. And the one good thing about having someone like myself assist is that I'm a neutral party. I don't care what your charter looks like, so long as it's legal. I don't live in the city of Elgin. But I have been doing this for 24 years. I've represented 45 or more cities as their city attorney. I've done, done work all over the state of Texas, doing all sorts of different work for cities in the state of Texas, and I've been doing charter work for 20 years, probably. And so, I've seen all the mistakes, I've seen all the language, I see the pros and cons, and I can give that unbiased pro and con analysis to the body when they're going through the process. The thing about pros and cons, and I always, 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 I always sort of put it like this, my pro may be another person's con, right? So, I don't try to force my pros, whatever, in my opinion, but I do, I do lay it out there, it's like, here's one effect, here's another effect. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the process, or anything else you may have.
So, we wanna get a committee together. How do you suggest we do that? Or is there a?
Well, y'all have nine council members. I would reckon, well, I would recommend that each council member just appoint someone to the committee. That's what I would recommend. That's a committee of nine. Each council member has their own individual appointee that they can appoint, and that's how I would do it, if I was y'all.
And then, do we need to get him in, or do we need to go get it first, what we're doing now?
Mm-hmm.
To make sure with them all right now?
Right.
So, we need to hire him to do?
Yeah. That would be, I would make a motion. It's two-pronged. One, you want to have the committee do a review, but at the same time, looking to have you hire, because it hasn't been since 1986, to go see what is legal, because the last thing you wanna do is be reviewing things that aren't legal.
Right.
As of today, is to have the committee get confused in looking at changing things. So, one would be a vote, resolution, to have them do a review of the charter as it stands today, to see if there are any things that are no longer legal with state law. And then, it would be, if you guys decide to take that direction, would be council coming back later and you each appointing a member for the committee, if y'all are okay with each person getting one vote for nine at a, at a later council meeting.
How long would it take you? We haven't seen it, so I guess it's not a fair question. But how long does it generally take you to look through the entire charter?
It doesn't take that.
It's 40 pages.
It's 40 pages?
Yeah.
How long really it takes me to read 40 pages? I mean, really, it's, it's not a complicated, I've been doing this a long time, it's not a complicated, it's not a complicated legal analysis, unless you have something really weird in there that I've, I haven't seen, and that doesn't, honestly, that, it does happen still, but it doesn't happen as, as often as it used to. So, you know, it's just a few hours review to give that, you know, of a comprehensive legal review of the charter.
Yeah. So, I have a question. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How would all of this be handled if there was already a petition started? How would, and say that we're in the midst of doing a charter review committee, and that you're doing your due diligence to look over what is legally there and what needs to legally be changed, but there's already a petition getting ready to get started, and say that that petition gets to go onto the ballot, would that be, would this be non-avoided because we can't change or amend the charter for another two years? So, how would that, how would that fall within this?
Okay, so that's a lot to unwrap, so I'm gonna try to unwrap it. Is that all right? So, the, so if a petition is in progress and a petition gets presented to you in time for it to be placed on the requested amendments, to be placed on the May ballot, then you're stuck, right? It has, assuming it meets the requirements, assuming several things. It meets the requirements of the code for purposes of signatures, assuming that what they, how they want the charters to be amended is legal. Well, even in that case, it would still go on the ballot. Then, it would go on the ballot. And unless you have an opportunity to propose additional amendments, you are correct, if one of those passes, then you can't amend the, you can't amend the charter again for two years, all right? So, that's the answer to the first question. Like, if, if something comes in this, before, in time to order it for May, a petition to amend the charter, in time to order it for May, and y'all don't add something, you will not have the opportunity to do that again for two years if any of those charter amendments pass, all right?
Okay, hold it right on that spot.
Any single amendment?
Single amendment, any single amendment.
So, is there a way that we can counter an amendment that may have been put on there?
I don't know what you mean by counter, but.
Like they said, we can't have nine.
Well, let me.
They say we can't. One.
Yeah, so, I would have to see, I couldn't answer that, I can't answer that question in a vacuum.
Okay.
I would have to see what the actual petition amendment was, and then we could do the analysis of if, if there was a concern about that, how, how is that dealt with? And then I'm gonna go another step further. Let's assume you get a petition that's valid, but it's, it doesn't get provided to the city council until after the deadline to order the election for this May. So, it doesn't go, it wouldn't go on until the November ballot, right? This body could still put together, could put together a charter committee and still do the evaluation of the, of the, of the charter and add any additional amendments to the ballot that you would like to add. That includes the petition that the petitioners filed. That just happened recently down the road, the city of Bastrop, they had charter amendments. Some were council-initiated and one was petition-initiated, and they were all on the ballot at the same time.
So, I think that maybe answers your question. This body, city council, we could put amendments to go before the voters in May?
You could, yes, absolutely you could. Let's, let's assume a petition shows up and it's certified in time. All this has to do, has to be done in time to order the election, which is quickly coming upon us. But yes, this body could do that on its own motion, without a charter committee or a charter commission, absolutely.
Forrest. Oh, yeah, Forrest, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
What, what happens if a amendment is put forth and voted on through a petition initiative and it's not legal?
So, then we would.
But it passes.
But it passes. We would, we would, we would not, well, my recommendation, if I'm your legal counsel, would be to not enter an order putting it into effect. Remember, it's a two-step process. It gets adopted when, if a majority of the voters vote for it, but it doesn't go into effect until you enter an order into the records. And so, when that happens, it's always my advice, and it has happened, it's always advised, my advice to my client, because it's, it's one of two things could happen, right? If it's not legal and you put it into effect, you're gonna get challenged, more than likely, depending on what it is, the legality of.
Are you still that?
Yeah, okay. The legality of, the legality, the legality of the actual amendment. And then, the other option is just don't put it into effect, and, and that's a decision you'll have to make based on the facts, based on what is the petition language, what is the preempt, what is the issue as to why it's not legal? All of those things would have to be evaluated, legal advice given, and then you make a policy decision based on what you think the best outcome is. Examples, the city of Austin had a, I think it's called a, I can't remember what the name of the petition was, like Freedom? I don't remember the name of it. I didn't assist them with it. But it had to do with reduced enforcement for marijuana possession.
That's what I'm referring to.
I'm fully familiar with that issue.
We are too.
It is, I helped the city of El Paso with that issue, so I've dealt with it already.
Same group that did the.
Yeah, and I'm interim city attorney in Bastrop, so I'm getting to deal with it there right now, so.
So, I do have a question. I suppose if we determine this evening that we wanna go forward with your, you know, working, you're working with us, we need to spend some time coming up with an agreement, you know, just, you know, a work agreement, what, what is it gonna cost us to do this and that sort of thing?
It'll cost, I'm happy to tell you what I think it would cost, depending, based on the history. You know, I think it'll cost anywhere from $10,000 to $18,000 for me to assist them.
Okay. We do have an agreement.
Yeah, we have, we do have an, I do have an, I do have an agreement already to assist.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that, that, that's in place.
All right. Thank you.
And it's just, you know, it's just my time.
What, so for, can you educate us on cities Bastrop, Taylor, Flugerville, cities that are more akin to our size? Do they have ongoing charter? Like Austin, I think, has their charter committee. I mean, it's, it's ongoing constantly, right? So, for a city like us, is, if we, if we appointed a committee, would this be something that we would say, go forth and conquer by this date and then you're dissolved? Or would we put something in our charter to say, the charter, a charter review committee will be created in this way, because we don't have that in the charter? But we put together a process and then it would maybe give a timeline for how often the charter would be reviewed? Is that recommended?
So, this is just my opinion, all right? So, you're just getting Charlie's opinion. I like required charter reviews and charters because I usually get hired to do it. But short of that, I'm not a fan of mandatory charter reviews and, and charters. And the reason for that is because if you set up your charter correctly, it's, it's supposed to be like the United States Constitution. It lays out what your form of government looks like, all right? Things like, you know, things like, you know, how we deal with marijuana enforcement, how we deal with climate change, those are just examples of petitions I've seen. Those should be boots on the ground, day-to-day decision-making things that the body does in the moment because they're living it at the time, all right? Should be by ordinance, it should, it should be by, you know, giving direction to the city manager on how it should be done. It shouldn't be dictated by charter amendments. And so, in my opinion, if you put together a good charter, it sets out the backbone of what you're, what you want your government to look like. How many council members do we have? What are our term limits? What terms, what, what, how long are our terms? Do we have initiative, referendum, and recall? What are, what are the requirements for those initiative, referendum, and recall? Do we wanna make sure that certain things get adopted without dictating what those contents are? For example, do we wanna put in a charter that you have to have, you're required to have an ethics policy? I have my opinions on that, but like, but without dictating the details of that? I think that if you create that strong backbone, there's no need to annually, or every four years, or every five years, review it because it works for you. And then, when you discover that it's not working for you, you're gonna find that out one of two ways. You're gonna get a petition from your community because they think it's not working correctly and ask you to change it, right? To put it on the ballot, to change it, or the boots on the ground, where the rubber meets the road, you folks will know that something's not working. And to then, to then, we need to place this in front of our citizens. So, I don't think that placing something like a required review is necessary. I think that it should just occur naturally and it should occur, it should occur as your community grows, and a regular review, in my opinion, is not a good use of the city's And you asked another question, I think?
Oh, I probably did.
I apologize.
But what are some of?
Oh, so you did ask like, so I don't know about Taylor, I can't remember what Taylor's charter says.
Oh, yes, I asked kind of what, what, what are Taylor, do they have ongoing committees?
Yeah, so Flugerville does. Flugerville's charter actually says. Oh, so you did ask like, so I don't know about Taylor, I can't remember what Taylor's charter says.
Oh, yes, I asked kind of what, what, what are Taylor, do they have ongoing committees?
Yeah, so Flugerville does. Flugerville's charter actually says, Flugerville's charter says that they have an annual review every five years and that the recommendations of that, of that committee are required to go on the ballot. So the city council has no discretion. It's basically a built-in petition, for lack of a better word. Bastrop does not have that, neither does the city of New Braunfels, where, where I, where I actually lived, and I was city attorney for five years, six years. But Flugerville does have that in their charter. And that was initiated by charter petition. The, the governing body didn't put it in.
So since he already has an agreement...
Really, you guys just directing city attorneys?
Attorney, what is it?
Charlie's providing the direction as far as, you know, one, you have started on his charter review, and then do that now, and you also start, get, get the, your form this in there, get that committee, roll it power, you know, like, that's...
Yeah, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't like put you on the spot of trying to put somebody appoint now. When's your next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. You know, I would, you know, if, if you wanna put together a committee to have them do a review and get a charge, I would take the next two weeks, reach out to your constituents, figure out who you would like to place on that, on that committee. They don't have to know anything about local government. I will teach them that. I will give them the broad picture of that. But you, you know, you wanna choose somebody who's vested in the community and wants what's in the best interest of the community. Find those people so that they can be appointed at the next meeting. And then also think about individually, if there's anything that you think that the charter, that needs to be looked at in the charter, and bring that forward to the next meeting for discussion by your, by your, the rest of your council members. And make a decision if there's anything specific you want them to look at. You can make your appointments and you can give them a charge all in, all at the same meeting.
And you just need to know you need to go do the legal part of it.
Yeah, I just, I am, yeah. If you wanna release the hounds, so to speak, I guess.
Do that.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can do that review.
Okay. Okay, all minds clear?
No, I'm good.
Got it? We're good?
No action. What we'll do is I'll work with city secretary to put those agenda items. It'd basically be, one would be the appointments, and then the other one would be what are your charges for it?
Yep, that's exactly right. It could be just a general charge, we don't need you to look at anything specific, just please review, broad review, including legal, or if there's something specific, be sure to include that in there. And then I'll work with the city attorney, the city secretary, city manager about putting, you know, how we set up the first meeting, and then the committee will pretty much take it over from there. I give them some, some good direction and they take it over.
All right.
I feel like I was off my game a little bit. I apologize for that.
I would love to know what is the best charter amendment and the worst charter amendment ever.
Well, I think that's gonna always be a matter of opinion. So I should probably keep my opinion to myself. I, 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 um...
Maybe, maybe oddest? How about that? Not worst, how about oddest?
Oddest, yes, oddest. I will think about that and I will get you an answer. How about that? Because I can't think of it off the top of my head.
Just a quick little, so we're going through the charter. We're gonna take out the he pronouns and put in the generic pronouns.
Sure. That's easy.
It's just gonna have to be an amendment for every time we do this, it's a different section.
No, you know what? That's a really good question. No, that's all the same subject. So let's, let's say you, you've got a charter that says he everywhere, right? He does this, he does this, he does this, he should, he should. And we wanna change that, we wanna change the charter so it's, so it's, you know, non-specific as to gender. That's one amendment. It would be, there would be, so the way it works, the way it works, I'm sorry, my neck is getting a little sore, so I'm, I'm gonna put this up. The way it works is that we have a, we have a measure and we have a proposition, all right? The measure is the actual red line changes to the charter. So we would have a measure and, and then the proposition is the language that actually goes on the ballot, all right? So we would have a proposition that says, shall the city charter be amended to be gender-neutral? That would go on the ballot, all right? And then that would be proposition, let's say that's Proposition A. Measure A would actually be all the red line changes associated with that ballot proposition. So that if that passes, we know that all the changes in Measure A are, are put into place if Proposition A passes. So it would be one, it would be one. Same with, if there are multiple, let's say there are multiple provisions in your charter that are not consistent with state law, that would also be one ballot proposition. Shall the city charter be amended to be consistent with state law? I consider that one subject. And then all of those changes that were not consistent with state law would be in the measure and be changed if that ballot proposition passes.
So, so let me ask you a question, follow-up question on that. You're gonna review our charter, let's say there's something that is not within law, and you're like, yeah, this is a fairly simple one, I've seen this before. It seems like the best course of action would put that on the ballot in May as opposed to directing the charter committee to suggest that in November. Am I right?
No, because if it passes, then you can't have another charter election for two years. You can only have a charter, you can only amend your charter every two years.
That's right, okay, okay.
That, that wouldn't help you in that case.
Okay, thank you.
And there, I mean, there have been times when, when I have recommended about a change to charters because it wasn't consistent with the law and I've been ignored. So that also happens sometimes, right? I bring it to them. And they're like, yeah, we don't care if that's, we're gonna try to enforce it, and if we get called to the carpet, then so be it.
I mean, would you still want to do that for May, knowing that there's a whole petition out there?
Knowing there's a petition out there, I don't, I mean, I don't like, yeah, I mean, petition out there is one thing, a petition, a petition in the door is another thing. So I would withhold, I would withhold anything until that, if that transpires, then yeah, you might wanna, you might wanna do that.
Well, I'll just say that just to join the question regarding that if it's something that we're not in compliance with regarding it being legal.
Yeah.
Do we wanna go ahead?
I think, I think what your question is, you'll do your review. You may have one or ten different items that are on the state law.
Or maybe none, who knows, yeah.
If a petition were to meet all the statutes where it would be on the May election, council at that point in time can also direct to put those changes that are out of state law on the same ballot in May at the same time.
Yes.
That would be your, because then had any of, any of, you can't go for another two years. So that would be your backup. But you will have that information from him prior to...
Yes.
By the time you, it might be the same night, here's your petition, it has to go on the ballot, here's your other ones that are also going at the same time.
Yeah, I plan to review your charter so that the very first thing the charter committee does is go over the legal issues, right? That'll be the very first thing they do. So it'll be done. So even if a, a petition comes in timely, it's certified appropriately, it's in time to order the election, we, you could still, it would, my work will have been done in time for you to place those on the May ballot as well if you choose. As far as legal review.
Yeah.
That answered your...
That answers my question.
Can I say that real quick? I meant to say this earlier, and again, I really off my game. I love Hawkeye, like that's really, really cool. But I have to be honest, I love it because we have something called Hog Wild. Have you guys ever heard of that? Yeah? So we put on a seminar, we'll make sure everybody gets invitations, it's for anybody that we've ever dealt with, and it's an educational seminar that we do for free for all of our clients. I think Mark, have you been to it? You haven't been to one? It's called Hog Wild. When I said y'all saw had, had Hawkeye, we are made for each other.
I think you need to change that agreement because he's...
I don't even know what Hawkeye is and I wanna do it.
Fourth, fourth Saturday.
Fourth Saturday?
In October.
In October? All right, I'm here. I'm here.
It starts early though, so it's Thursday we got it.
All right, that's fine. I am, I will, have been recovered from this surgery by then, no doubt.
Okay, we'll let you sit down, because I know that's hard for you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the confidence.
Should I go home?
Yes, I think you can go home.
All right, appreciate it.
Be back in two weeks.
I know, y'all have a long, y'all have a long meeting.
Be back to you in two weeks. Okay, we're gonna go to new business, I'm sorry, we kinda had to get some things done Number five, resolution of the city of Elgin authorizing the mayor to execute a fund, funding agreement between the city of Elgin, Texas and the Elgin Chamber of Commerce for expenditure of hotel occupancy tax funds.
So council, you may recall that we did have a contract coming before the holidays that, that was approved. There was some fine tuning that, it probably came prematurely, there was some fine tuning that needed to be worked out with the chamber and staff. That has been done. This is the new contract coming before you. Essentially, the terms are, it's a one-year contract with the ability for both to agree to extend it by a year for the, I believe it's fifty-two thousand for the year. Now, this is for them to operate the visitor center. That is the cost. And talking to staff and talking to chamber, that will get them through some of the dates and times and whatnot changed for different events, which both sides were in agreement with. It has gone before the chamber board, they've fully executed it, and I'm just bringing this back in front of council for execution, so we can move on to the funding here.
All I need is a motion.
Here, I make a motion, we accept this amendment to the resolution.
Do you have a second?
Who's there?
All right, we'll begin with council member Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Roger, yes. McShan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
All right, motion carries. Sorry we made y'all wait so long.
Thank you.
I just couldn't go fast enough. Okay.
So kinda keeping pace with where we are, we're moving to number six on the council agenda, which is a resolution of the city of Elgin, Texas authorizing the city manager to execute a master professional service agreement and work authorization with Gradient Solutions Corporation of Mansville, Texas for finance-related services and making certain findings related here in two. This is, we didn't actually take action on this, this was brought forth to council a few council meetings ago. I've had conversations with individual council members that had questions on this. I am bringing this back forth to council because I, I strongly feel that this is a need that the council needs to push forward with. On my list, it would probably be the number one need as we go into it, where this is gradient coming in essentially as to help with compliance, to make sure the city is in compliance when we're talking about auditing. We currently have, I believe, two audits external. One of the great things about getting all the grant money that the city has seen that's inquired with the capital improvements is there's a lot of audits that come with that. We recently awarded a new contract that will require a lot of that. But the day-to-day nature of the business and the finance, we still feel like we're pretty solid in the arrangement that we have, but when it does come to being in compliance with state guidelines, some of the grants, some of the record-keeping that has to go beyond when we're talking about paying the bills and appropriating funds that we do need creating. As presented to you guys before, this would not have an impact on the budget as it is approved by council, so we're not looking for additional funds or having to shuffle on there for what has been approved. But gradients here, if you have specific questions, but I think I've gone through the contract with each of you guys on any kind of specific items that you had questions or concerns, and I'm here to answer anything else that may come forth or bring the appropriate person to it, but this is something I think that the city does need to move forward with into this year specifically.
Tell me this will not sidetrack our search for a finance director?
It will not sidetrack the search for a finance director. We've been keeping mayor, mayor program up to date on that, so as we receive applicants, and, and it kinda goes back to some of the conversations we've had before, we just have not had what we, council, in the conversations with all of you, what we're looking for a finance director for today for Elgin, none of those have met that, that level that would be coming forward. Obviously, with decisions tonight and interim coming in and stuff like that, is this is the best way to keep the city operating and functioning. We still do have some very high-profile projects out there with some of the grants. I aforementioned, you know, ten million dollars County Line Road Phase Two, just for one, we still have to close up Pistol Hill, Skater Project, Safe House School, the list goes on and on. A lot of those that are done, how the art of funds were spent, there, there's a lot of paperwork processing that has to go in addition to the detail. I think this gives staff the confidence to, to have a professional there to help guide through a lot of that processes while still being able to deal with the day-to-day that we wanna do. It's very hard to deal day-to-day and then have to go figure out how to do something over here and then jump back to the day-to-day. And, you know, when you have auditors coming in and the prep time and the work that goes, especially if you haven't been through that process and it's not like a day-to-day process, this, this helps bridge that gap. Again, from a budgeting standpoint, it is, it's dollars that you're not pulling from another direction to supplement this.
Will this help to address some of the issues that came forward in our recent audit report?
Yes. And, and a lot of that is, if, if you recall, is your balance sheets are good, and, you know, we feel very strongly that's counting, it's a lot of the processing and paperwork and how do we accomplish that on a day-to-day basis? And then how is it getting filed and how's it being accounted for? That will be helped out with that. You know, we, we have great staff, they're very dedicated into getting all of that done. But it, it is a lot of work, and when you're trying to figure it out in addition to doing it. And then we have had a gap which we have discussed since the last finance director, and we've gone through how Elgin got to where they were with each of you guys on the conversation is, this is the best path forward today. This is not meant to be a permanent solution, and that's why it's presented that. But for where Elgin is today and where we think we're gonna be in the near-term future and some of the conversations that we've had, this is the best approach.
And the price, I know I asked you this earlier, but I got asked this question multiple times, the price for the amount of hours that you're gonna work per month is reasonable?
It's, it's in reasonable, yes. I wouldn't tell you otherwise.
And Gradient is still on board with...
Gradient is on board, but she has sat here tonight through this, so she, they are definitely I'd like to make a motion, we just move with this. Already kicking the can down the road.
Okay. I have a second.
I have a second.
All right, we'll begin with council member Swain.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Dennis, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Item two, as she said.
There we go. Thank you. So item number two, new business, discussion and possible direction to staff regarding distribution of community nonprofit support funding, as included in the FY 2024, 2025 annual operating budget.
And we're going to table this one because I have some council members who have not completed their evaluation. I'm calling you on the carpet, I'm not gonna say who it is, but I need you to get that done as quickly as possible so that we can get the checks written. And as soon as possible, I mean this week, I want it done this week.
Okay.
I'm calling on next, but that's, we'll put that on the next one. Thank you very much. Moving right along.
Uh, new business, item number three, resolution of the city of Elgin authorizing mayor to execute an agreement with, for the 2023, 2024 annual street resurfacing program and making certain findings related to year two. As councilmen remember, not the current budget year that we're in, but the previous budget year, council had signed half a million dollars for the street maintenance program. Those funds were encumbered to be utilized. There was a little bit of a delay in moving forward with that project because a lot of it is... it is Avenue B, where we're actually going to be installing curb and gutter and additional parking and actually widening Avenue B from a street pavement so that it ties in down there to Veterans Park, provides additional parking there. We've been waiting for the PD project to kind of move along. Design plans were done, went out to bid. The low bidder has been looked at as far as references. They've come back. The project is well within budget for what the city had encumbered to be spent. So staff is recommending approval to move forward with the contract. They would start with the project Avenue B, which if you were, remember just got finished replacing the water line. So the idea is this will be the last piece of the puzzle once the pavement is done. You have good infrastructure down Avenue B and that'll be open for the public to enjoy and to be able to have additional parking down there to what I think everybody sees around Veterans Park is bringing in quite a big draw downtown. It's Avenue B and, and all the other streets that the city adopted in that project. So I believe there's Ochoa and one or two other. There was a little bit of drainage improvements as well. And the only project that we pulled from there was Carlson Lane, just due to all of the construction that's going up and down Carlson Lane. Any type of work that we did would be very minor and it wouldn't last very long. So we know that that will eventually be a capital improvement project along there. So, but everything else that was on council's approved last is being funded and done.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, so we moved to second and we'll begin with mayor pro ten.
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kuznowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Swain, yes.
Love, yes.
Fraser, yes. Dennis, yes.
Going to number four, ordinance amending chapter forty, article three, division six, section forty, two eighty-two, division two, section forty, one seventy-one, and division nine, section forty, three forty of the City of Elgin Code of Ordinances, making certain amendments regarding the time schedules for enforcement of school speed zones, providing for savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances or resolutions. So the ISB due to start times of the schools have changed. Most of you guys who have gone to the school, speed zone that has a little hours of operation and when they can enforce the reduced speed. This is not changing the speed limit. This is not changing where the speed zone starts and ends at any locations. This is merely changing the hours that at reduced speed can be enforced at the different locations as requested by the school. So an engineer study doesn't need to be done for traffic or anything else like that. We're just trying to make sure that the times posted marry up with when the school is actually in session or letting out a session. Staff recommends approval. We move forward with changing out the signs, but that has to go through council by ordinance.
And, and then we're posting the changes everywhere possible.
We will, we will, the signs have been made, have been made. We will get those out to all the locations. School staff made this recommendation and staff has nothing against it.
I mean, everywhere on social media, everywhere, everywhere where people are aware that the only the times have changed.
Correct. We will, we will put that out. I will work with city staff to put out a news blast that, you know, the, the locations, where you have to slow down and where you can speed up, none of that has changed. It's just simply the hours of enforcement.
Oh, because I'm all about 2:30 to 4:30. And now you're changing it.
I know, I know.
Is the reason that like Harvest Ridge and Trinity Ranch aren't included because their signs are out in the county? Okay.
They are not governed by the city. For the streets, all of those roads for all. Trinity Ranch is governed by the county, so they would have to go through ordinance. Harvest Ridge is actually governed by the municipal district, so they would have their own process for changing there.
Well, I'm okay with it. I passed this. The school recommends this and we're doing it, but should we consider a standard time for all of it? I know it's a half hour here, a half hour there, but somebody's going to drive through a school zone.
I don't want to speak for the school, but essentially, in speaking for the school, it's elementary, elementary, middle and high school all are starting at different times. And they do try to coordinate bus routes and traffic and pick up with kids and stuff of that nature. So that's, that's the reason why they, it's not across the board.
And if you think about it and you've driven it, it kind of makes sense because sometimes it's a 20 mile an hour zone and there's nothing happening at the school at all as it stands now. So maybe this makes better sense.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve this change to accommodate the school schedule.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And we'll begin with council member Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kuznowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Swain, on my first take, yes.
Love, yes.
Don't say that because they've got plenty of cops out there.
I'm hearing what all the cops say. Y'all heard that, right? Looking for his.
Well, why they stop me? Because they at that now. Okay.
Next is number seven, Bastrop County Advisory Board of Health Applications.
And I'm going to have turn that over to, to council member Love since she's been on the board committee. But we got an email that happened during the holidays, so it kind of got a little bit shuffled. I'm just going to say we dropped it. And so it has been posted. We've got it out there. And we only get one person to represent Elgin. So we've put it out there. We'll see what kind of applications we get back or if we get any back at all.
Where, where are all these people coming from?
Applications.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully it would be our, our.
No, sorry, I meant, you know, I mean, I just, I guess I'm curious. Elgin only has one.
It's Elgin, Bastrop and Smithville.
Yeah. It's with the county.
Oh, so, okay.
Of course, it's the entire county.
So it's only three.
Yeah, for the public health department. But it's, it's more than three because the commissioners get a vote as well.
Right.
So they get a person as well.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. But I'm just saying Elgin gets one.
Yeah.
So I know it's been, Amy, I believe it's been posted, city website. I think we even have some paper ones that are printed off for people to fill in and whatnot. So we are pushing for that. And then I do believe there is a deadline, which essentially we would have to make that appointment by the next council meeting. So we'll be back on agenda for the next council meeting to select. No action here tonight. It's just to let you guys know or if you know of anyone that'd be interested in whatnot to make sure that they get their applications in.
And I'll have someone who has a background in health field, who has been doing it for years. Been with the state. So, okay.
We'll talk.
But ultimately, that is our deadline. We do have to make that appointment by the response.
Yes. Yes, Amy?
Our announcement time. Feel like being in church. Church announces.
Thursday night is SIP shop and stroll. And despite the weather, it, it certainly isn't going to be balmy. But on the other hand, it probably won't be that bad. I'm certainly hoping that we don't get a terrible Texas mess. But if weather allows you to get out and come support your local businesses, everybody appreciates that. And Elgin will be traveling to Bastrop this year for the MLK Walk on the third Monday. And they have a fantastic program planned and put together. So hope to, hope to see Elginites making their way to Bastrop for the MLK Walk. And we'll continue to share details online. And it was in the January e-newsletter. If you haven't read your January e-newsletter, you should make a point to read that. And share it with your friends and family and all your constituents because it's chock full of important information. And definitely on this county board, health board, encourage you guys to, encourage people to apply. While Elgin has one official representative that you are responsible for, there are many seats and there could certainly be more than one person from Elgin helping represent our county on that board. So I'm glad to hear we've got qualified, talented people that can look to serve in that way. Thank you.
And along with the MLK Elgin Gospel Choir, we'll have rehearsal.
Saturday.
Saturday, thank, no, Sunday. It's Sunday. It's going to be in Bastrop. But we're rehearsing Sunday, I think, at Mount Moriah. And that's open to anybody who can sing.
Right. Sunday at two.
Thank you.
At Mount Moriah.
Yeah. All righty.
Here you go. On another happy note, we took our little bike ride that we did.
Oh, yeah.
And they put in here that we raised $2,500. That was our initial cash donations after the raffle, the auction. It was $4,891.
Oh, wow. All right. All right, it is 9:05 and we are adjourned.